What are we missing?
I'm John, so I'm here today.
John's not here.
And there's only three of us.
Right.
But we can still open the public hearing.
Hey, how are you? Good, good, good.
We could probably even pick over more of the table if Martha even wanted to move on this side.
Okay.
It's all right, I'm used to being here.
Good evening, my name is John Weiss, I'm the Chair of the Board and I'm calling the meeting of September the 17th to order. To my right, that right is now my left.
Kathleen Pearson.
And George Morris.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
So, we have a public hearing this evening which is scheduled at a time certain of 7:15, and so before that we'll do some administrative chores until we get to 7:15 and we want to start the public hearing exactly on time. So, the first item is our minutes of the last meeting, do I have, anybody have any comments on those or can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the meetings as written, meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If that passes. The liaison reports, Board of Selectmen, Martha, do you want to, is there anything that you need to report?
Um, let's see. Nothing that's really affecting us per se, there are a couple of other updates I could give now if you want.
Sure.
One of the things that the town is starting to look at is the parking on Plum Island behind Olga Way and DEP has given the approval, I think, for us to seriously take a look at it, so that process is going to start, Tracy's getting it surveyed and we'll get a layout to see how many spaces we can get back there.
So, did you get back to the woman who was here last meeting?
I did, I did, yep, yep.
Alright, good. So what's the next step on that though?
So the next step is to get a survey done and then a, you know, conceptual design done for the parking, and Tracy and I talked about process, you know, because it's more than six spaces, it'll have to go before site plan review and Conservation Commission.
Now, is that just the parking at Olga Way or is there other improvements that are scheduled for that area, aren't there?
I think it's parking at Olga Way and I believe that there's also discussion about some lighting going down Plum Island Boulevard.
To the, right, to the beach area in the center.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm not, I'm not sure whether that will be done at the same time or if it'll be phased.
Who's in charge of this?
Well, Tracy and Doug are taking the lead on it right now.
And it came about because of parking issues?
Well, it came about, it's really an offshoot of the Plum Island traffic study that MVPC did on the parking issues on Sunset Boulevard and trying to find alternatives for that parking since that's creating issues for both environmental and traffic, and it was a parking area before the Plum Island Water and Sewer Project, so...
So it's the vacant lot, town-owned vacant lot, not just the street, but the...
Yeah, no, it is the town-owned vacant lot.
Anything else?
No, there's discussion, continued discussion about entertainment at the Beach Coma.
Oh, it is continued, I thought it was a moot issue.
Well, it came up again because the class of, I think it's 1984, wants to have their reunion celebration there with entertainment and that kind of opened the whole discussion again.
Okay, alright. MVPC has not met this summer and the first meeting is tomorrow night and I'll report back on that at the next meeting.
John's not here for ConCom.
John's not here, anything on the ZPA, probably not.
Tomorrow night, CBA.
Oh, so there you go, okay, good. On, maybe just...
Actually, I can give one, one update on the ConCom, yes, Borrego was on their agenda for last night for the Yser property and apparently they did not appear, so Doug is going to basically ask them to kind of start again and re notify abutters and so on and so forth.
Because they didn't show they have to start the process over again?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's entirely submitting the process or, but if it's, but at least a butter notification.
That's the Main Street property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we also did just yesterday get a revised application from Borrego for the Middle Road property that is on the selectmen's agenda for next week and we didn't get it in time for the Board to even have an opportunity to review it or make any comments, I've gone through part of it, they did address a number of the things that were brought up in the Board's letter as well as some additional items, so it's in my office if anybody would like to take a look at it.
Okay.
It occurs to me as well, I don't think I ever got a copy of the signed letter that we sent to the...
Oh, okay.
Did you all get mine?
I saw the draft email but I didn't see the thing after that.
If you could make copies of the letter that we sent to the Board, that'd be, I just need to put in...
Yeah.
You see, no, I didn't see the, well, I didn't see my signed version, I thought, anyway, I mean, I saw it, but I didn't get a copy of it.
Before the public hearing meeting starts, do you want us to switch it to the speaker in the room?
No.
George, I'm standing here. That's why I hate this one.
No whispering. Okay, so I think we, I don't know if we can have a preliminary discussion about this issue or not, I don't think so, on the building commission, because I think that we want to have that for maybe more than five minutes or so.
Yeah, I think so.
But we could...
About ongoing business?
Well, actually, under appearances and A and Rs, I can report Mike Coolahan from Roots to Wings is not going to appear tonight, they've actually gone out and taken a more detailed look at the site and they had developed a site plan with a building and parking located and they're now going to tweak that based on what they've seen out there.
Which property is that?
It's directly south of the Pritchard property on the corner.
Oh, okay, so it's that one right there.
There's a rise and it's supposed to be up high and it's accessed through a road that's just south of there.
Okay.
Right, and you can see there's a chain across it and I think it says "For Sale by Owner" on it.
Okay.
Yes, that's potentially encouraging.
Right, so he is planning on putting a yoga studio in there, some of the spaces will probably get rented out to like businesses.
Christie's Place looks nice when I drove by the other day.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, her open house is the 26th Friday.
Oh, I thought it passed, I thought she already did.
No, it's next Thursday.
It's next Friday.
Next Friday.
Right, unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town.
It doesn't look nice, do you know what it was?
Oh, it looks terrific.
Amazing.
Looks terrific.
I wonder if we can do with Richard now, I mean, for seven minutes, do you think we can do that?
Try.
Can try. Richard, why don't you come on up and maybe grab a chair, one of these chairs and just kind of sit yourself in front. For those of you, Richard Moss is interested, we have an, we have an open seat in the Planning Board, there are typically five members of the Planning Board and one of our members moved out of town and so we have an open seat for that, we also have a opening for an associate member which was heretofore held by George Morris at the end and now he's a full member, so we are very happy that you have an interest in it.
I do.
And so open it up to questions from the Board if you have any.
Go ahead, George.
I read the resume or your curriculum vitae and it was very interesting, to say the least, and I still think, despite what you said earlier tonight when I talk with you, I think you have good credentials to learn quickly and to fit in, I think that's the case, do you feel the same way?
Yes, I don't know how many of you have read over my resume, but basically amongst other things, I was a plastic surgeon for 29 years, Carla was my office manager for 10 of them.
I didn't know that part.
Yeah, and I did well, frankly, I did very well, and I've always had an interest in real estate, in fact, for a while I built some homes as a part-time thing, I just, my dad was a real estate broker, my brother was a home builder, my mother was a real estate person, so it's something that I grew up in. At this time, I'm retired and I think it's time for me to give back and that's, that's my motivation.
Are there any things you'd like to see changed?
Well, I think I'd like to see the way things are first.
Sometimes I'm only asking, I'm just curious, sometimes people are here to give back to the community and sometimes it's because something they've seen they really don't like and they'd like to see an improvement in one area or another.
When I decided to move to Newbury, I wasn't born here, I wasn't raised here and I've lived here for two years now, I chose this place, I liked it here, people have a choice in where they live, they don't have a choice in where they're born, so I chose to come here and I like the community, so it's, and I'm not that familiar with it, so I'm coming with a fresh outlook on things.
Excuse me?
Do you have any other questions?
I come up with multiple, but I don't give you a chance.
The, just, I'm not sure if you know exactly what our procedure will be, but we have yourself as an interest and there's another person who has expressed an interest, so it could be that we recommend one of you for the associate's position and one for the full-time position, it's also possible that the associate's position will become a full-time position sometime in the coming year, we don't know if things could change. Would either one of those positions work for you or do you, would you just really want to be a full-time member?
I think, since I'm not that familiar with things, I would go by whatever the Board felt where I could be most useful.
Just for example, George, maybe you could explain, because you were an associate for a year and a half?
About.
About a year and a half?
Yeah.
And George really defined the position much differently, he really attended every meeting, he sat with us at the meeting, he did everything but vote, he did research, he wrote with you the marijuana bylaw.
Right, worked on subcommittees.
Worked on subcommittees, and so it was a very activist position that he had, and so that's a possibility, we'd had other associate members who never showed up.
Yeah.
And they just weren't as helpful, but as you know, we have one person who is our staff person and Martha does everything, and so all...
That I am aware of.
Yeah, and also the Board members do a lot of different kinds of work and, depending on what the issue is, and so, so there's a possibility, we'll, we'll interview the other person, she's just sent her letter in today at our next meeting, and then the step, what we do procedurally is that we as a Board take a vote on what we want to do and we forward that vote to the Board of Selectmen, so probably in all right, this wouldn't happen until maybe the second meeting of the Board of Selectmen in October, off the top of my head, am I right? Because we have to meet with...
Probably, right, right, and then make a recommendation.
Right, so that's, that's our procedure, we're very happy that you have an interest in it.
Yep.
I mean, we would welcome participation of you in, in the Board and I really do believe that you can help us quite a bit.
As a person, if I'm going to do something, I do it.
That's what I thought.
And I would give it my best effort, I'm not going to be an absentee individual.
Yeah.
I'm either going to do it or I'm not.
I don't think that Carla would let you.
Don't tell her that.
It's nice to hear that because the associate member really doesn't have to be very active at all, they can miss most meetings and they show up under certain circumstances, but if you want to be active like that, that's terrific.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Well, Martha's been very helpful, she's forwarded to me some courses that I could possibly take.
Oh, right, 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 right.
But I'm not going to get involved in that until I know...
Sure.
Whether or not I'm going to...
And you should, really, you'll know, because we do have to wait two weeks to interview the other, other person, it probably will be about a month.
Okay.
That we would know, okay?
Okay.
And procedure-wise, just so you know, what we do is we make a selection, we make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and they actually approve the appointment for the empty seat till the election.
They actually make, they actually make the appointment.
So you make the recommendation and it's they that give the final decision?
And then the person fulfills that position until it's election time and then, and when that election comes around, then you need to run.
Right, that would be for the full member, if for the associate member, the appointment would be for an annual, for a year.
Yeah, okay, cross that bridge when we come to it.
Good, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, it's, according to my watch, 7:15, and so I'd like to...
May I ask a question? Are your microphones turned on?
Yes, they are.
The microphones are for the TV.
They're for TV, they're not for amplification.
Right.
So, yeah, everything is recorded and we're not there now, although I wonder if we could be.
These cameras are on.
Yeah, but, see, the cameras are on, if you look back, there's a green light there, there's a green light up there and a green light there, and so we're on TV.
Right, they did, they did amplify the selectmen at their last meeting because it was a full house and difficult to hear them, but I think we'd encourage all of you to come up a little bit closer if you're having...
So, if you, you were having a difficult time hearing me, that's...
No, I can't hear when I sit in the back row, I can't hear.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll try to speak up, so we'd like to open up the public hearing, the first order would be to read the public notice.
Read the public notice, yes. And that would be George.
Yes.
Hope you have your glasses.
I hope you have your glasses.
Oh, I do have my glasses.
It's right there.
There you go, and this is procedural, for those of you who have not been to meetings, you must read the public notice to open the public hearing so that everybody understands what has been noticed in terms of the project that we're about to listen to.
This is very fine print, you know.
I know.
Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, residents of the Town of Newbury, please note that on Wednesday, September 17, 2014, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Massachusetts, 01950, yeah, 01951, to consider the application of TW Excavating and Development Corporation, 103A Boxford Road, Raleigh, Massachusetts, for approval of a special permit under Newbury zoning bylaw, section 97 hyphen 3M and 97 hyphen 11C, for open storage of materials and equipment and for site plan review approval under Newbury zoning bylaw, section 97-9, for site modifications related to change of use of the parcel at 108 Newbury Port Turnpike owned by BST nominee trust David Pritchard trustee, from storage and sales of shipping containers and trailers to site contractors' general headquarters and storage yard as shown on the plan entitled "Special Permit Site Plan at 108 Newbury Turnpike in Newbury, Massachusetts," prepared by Thomas Manetta Incorporated Inc., dated 8/13/2014. The parcel consists of 6.3 acres of land located at 108 Newbury Port Turnpike, assesses map number R36, lot number 16, in the Business and Light Industrial District, copies of the plan and applications are on file with the town clerk and the planning office, 25 High Road, Newbury, Massachusetts, and are available for review during regular working hours. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed special permit and site plan review applications should appear at the time and place designated above. Signed, John Weiss, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
So the procedure will be that Tom Manetta is here and he will make a presentation for us and for you, and then I will open it up for discussion among Board members and the Town Planner, and then after that, I'll open it up for public questions, okay?
Just one thing, Tom, do you have the green cards? Thank you.
Tom?
For the record, I'm Tom Manetta from Thomas Manetta Incorporated, representing TW Excavating tonight, with us from TW, we have Jamie Warren and Jesse Warren, so if we have any questions that I can't answer, we can direct it to them. I guess a quick overview of the site, a lot of it was in your description, the site's known as 108 Newbury Port Turnpike, it's about 6.3 acres, it currently lies in the Business Light Industrial Zone, currently, as everybody I think knows, it's, it's a container storage distribution area, so TW Excavating is proposing a use out here for their construction facilities, so they'll have their offices, their, storage of their equipment and storage of any materials, so they're currently in Raleigh, Mass, they'll be moving their whole operation to Newbury. Under this proposal, there's no grading changes, there's no drainage changes, no impervious area additions, there's currently in orange here, you have, there's two buildings, there's a building here in the middle of the site and then three portable trailers which will all remain on-site, they'll be for offices and this building, this garage will be for equipment.
Can you point out where Route 1 is?
Route 1 is right at the bottom of the sheet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, right here.
Can you turn that more so they can see? Thank you.
But you're all familiar with the site, right, I mean, you...
Okay, so, you know, that would just, so here's Newbury Port Turnpike, right here is the existing entrance to the facility, that will remain the same, it will remain gated as it is now, nothing will change on the site as far as the facade goes, we are proposing some trees along the frontage which is here in green, you can see on the plan there's 45 trees in all, in this area here, you can see this outline of a roadway, basically is mostly, you know, the site is, is wide open, but there is almost like a pathway of, that the building, that the trucks come in, turn around, move out, that'll all remain the same other than this little area that is on the abutting lawn, so we'll just pull that back so it remains on this property. We have three main areas on the site, here is what we're proposing for material stores like loam, stone, and gravel, you have an equipment area where the trucks at night would come in and park, the backhoes and front-end loaders and things like that, and then this area in yellow is an area that's going to be designated for the trailers, pipe, you know, any, any storage of materials other than the heavy equipment. You know, we do have wetlands on the site which is outlined in green here, a couple of changes that are made on the plan since I submitted to the Board in preparation for the Conservation Commission, is this is a perennial stream out here, so we have riverfront which is shown in green, and the, and the blue outlined through the site is the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetlands.
100-foot buffer zone.
So you have a 200-foot riverfront and a 100-foot buffer zone.
I'm surprised it's that close, okay?
Can you point out the perennial stream, I wasn't looking?
It basically falls the edge of the wetlands.
To the back of the site?
Yeah.
Right.
It's approximate, we didn't field locate it, it's just kind of scaled off from the wetlands.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
George, any questions?
Not at this point.
Kathleen?
Has Doug seen this at all, does he have any concerns about operation near the wetlands at all?
He has seen it, we've had, we've had meetings, I think Tom is preparing to submit a request for determination, submitting it tomorrow, you know, Doug has noted that the site is largely disturbed already and the, the amount of disturbance is not going to be, you know, greater than what it is now, he also, there's an area back, up towards the top that is basically a barrier for siltation, for silt going into the stream and the wetlands from the loam, gravel and other material storage, which Doug thinks is a good solution for that.
Basically a crushed stone berm which is located in brown here and details on the corner of the sheet.
Will there be any vehicle maintenance or repair on the property?
Yes, yes, they'll be maintaining their own vehicles on the property.
Okay, and hazardous waste and other items are well under control and adequate safeguards?
Yeah.
Martha, do you have any thoughts or comments?
I had a few, a few questions, I also do have a, a letter from Chief Pearson which I can read into the record if you, if you'd like me to.
Sure.
This is addressed to the Town of Newbury Planning Board, my attention, below, please find the recommendations from the Newbury Fire Department regarding the proposed special permit at 108 Newbury Port Turnpike. One, the building must be equipped with hardwired smoke and carbon monoxide detectors with battery backup and linked to a central station monitoring company via a two-way radio frequency transmission system. Two, an OX box system will be required to house keys for emergency access to the building, and he does, he does know, I've explained to him that we're not going to have any new building, that this is all existing. Three, the fire department shall be provided a list of all hazardous chemicals to be stored on-site and SDS sheets for all said chemicals. Four, there shall be no, no sleeping overnight in the building, there shall be no trucks allowed to be housed in the building overnight, so that may, I don't know if that's an issue with your garage.
I believe that's a potential issue.
Okay, so it may be that you'll want to go meet with the fire chief or the Board of Fire Engineers, and Doug is on the Board of Fire Engineers, so he may be able to give you some guidance on that.
Okay.
Permit shall be obtained from the fire department for any and all storage tanks to be on premises, a settling tank shall also require permit from, from the fire department. A detailed plan for refueling operations shall be submitted to the fire department, are you going to be doing any refueling on-site?
Do you refuel on-site?
Well, that would be, that's something we'd have to go over, we do right now in Raleigh, but that doesn't mean that the company we use in Raleigh, the trucks is going to be able to come up to Newbury either.
Okay.
That's, that's something else.
They don't store it on-site, they...
You do, yeah, a truck comes in, I see, that's a bit different.
Yeah, they don't store it on-site.
We are in the water protection district here, aren't we?
We're south of that.
Oh, you just missed it.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And there shall be no paint spray booths allowed on premises, I don't know if you do any of, any spraying of your vehicles, if you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me, so I'll scan this and provide you with a copy of it.
Great.
I just received this, actually, yesterday.
So that's the fire chief?
This is the fire chief, I've also gotten a comment from Sam Jocson, the building inspector, which basically he had no building or site issues with it.
Okay.
I had some questions, one of which you've already, you know, noted that it is a perennial instead of an intermittent stream, so, you know, that's good and that'll be a Conservation Commission issue.
Right.
But in terms of traffic, I know there was some description of, of traffic impact in your application, but can you give us any more information about, you know, number of trips during the day, what hours you expect those trips to be, how you might mitigate the sound of, you know, the beeping of trucks backing up from the abutters and those kinds of issues?
Well, I think as far as the beeping of trucks, there's really nothing we can do to mitigate that, that's a safety...
Yeah, we did have, in the past things, there's nothing they can do to turn those off.
Right.
We know that.
You just can't, so...
Backup less.
Right.
Well, there is, I mean, there is a big loop on the site, you know, that's the idea of that loop.
Right.
As far as the traffic impacts, it's, it's going to be, you know, generally probably at 7 o'clock in the morning is, is going to be their biggest impact when they're leaving the site, and then, you know, during the day, probably from 3 to 5, 3 to 6 when the, when the trucks are coming back in, they're not constant trips coming back in and out all day, I'm not saying that some, some people won't...
It'd be helpful, Tom, to explain the business function here.
Yeah, it's, it's a site excavation company, you know, they do septic systems, drainage systems, water lines, you know, anything associated with, you know, house construction, you know, they dig the foundations, they backfill and things like that, so, you know, it's a site construction activity.
And so the trucks that are coming in are what size?
They're, you know, there's tractor-trailers, there's 18-wheelers, there's 10-wheelers, there's, you know, one-ton dumps, there's pickup trucks, there, there is an array of vehicles, there's flatbeds that will be bringing in, you know, excavators and, and bobcats and, you know, skid steers and things like that.
So my guess is that you don't do that at that existing site, do you, because, I mean, you can't have, you know, flatbeds coming in there unless they're small flatbeds, am I right?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah, but typically, we don't, a lot of our equipment doesn't come back at night.
I see.
And we have pieces of equipment that have never come back to our facility, they just, they get moved from job to job, so...
Job to job.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes if I'm, if I can't bring something to another site, the next day if it's loaded on a trailer, it'll, it'll come back and sit there, or, you know, if it needs to be repaired, or if it's January and it'll freeze in for a month, it'll come sit in the yard, but most of the time it's, you know, it's these trucks that, that come into the yard in the morning, I mean, excuse me, leave the yard in the morning, they go out. They go out, you know, do their deliveries and they'll come back at night.
Will you be selling anything to other contractors? Or basically your business coming in and out?
We can't ask him.
Yeah.
We need to ask him. No, the problem is, we're not, they're not hearing you.
Oh, they can't. The reason why, I'm just trying to get an idea of business, whether it's, the trucks are basically yours, it sounds like, not multiple people coming in and out. That's why I'm asking.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And you're not selling retail?
Correct.
The, the various loam and whatever that is that you're going to be storing is just being warehoused there and then you use it for your own purposes?
Right.
If operations begin at 7:00 a.m., is there any time before that that diesel equipment is turned on and warmed up?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be situations that, you know, particularly if a low bed has to get into Boston by seven. It's, it's going to start at four-thirty, five o'clock, get to the site, you know, load up and pull out. They also, TW also plows privately in for the state. So, you know, there's potentially times that it's going to be twenty-four-seven with trucks coming in and out, you know, during snow emergencies or if there is a water line break, you know, and things like that, so...
So going back to Martha's question about traffic, give us an idea of the counts.
I don't have a count. There's seventeen employees at TW Excavating right now. You know, some are just in pickup trucks. There's other tractor-trailers. Some of the tractor-trailers don't even come back, right? They go back, they go home with the driver and then they leave from their, you know, from their site early in the morning. So there's never going to be...
So the implication is that the maximum that you would ever have would be seventeen trucks or cars?
That would be the maximum in the morning. And that really, the reality of that ever happening is...
Excuse me, I want to, because you should comment up here, but do you, do you concur with that?
He needs to come to the microphone.
Yeah, would you come to the microphone? I'm asking.
Could you identify yourself just because people don't know who you are?
I'm Jesse Warren, one of the three owners of TW Excavating. Yeah, I would, I would say in the morning, I mean, that's typical. Most of our employees, some of them take the trucks home. Some of them, some of them come in, get their equipment and leave. They don't, and it would be different times. You know, we wouldn't all, you know, nobody would show up all at once. It's, it's all, it's, it's, it's hard to nail down depending on the job, depending on the location of the job, depending on the equipment needed for the job. So it's, you couldn't say, you know, five times a week, there's going to be seventeen guys that come in and get one dump truck, you know, each guy and then leave. But, you know, in the, in the morning, you know, probably you'd have, you know, probably ten people go in, get trucks and come out.
Okay.
So, because like someone like me, I don't necessarily go to the office or to the garage every morning. My truck, my pickup is with me. I go straight to the drop from my house. So there's days I, there's weeks I won't even go to the shop, all week long, you know? People will be there, but not necessarily me.
Okay. That's fine, thank you very much.
Especially in the winter, it takes a longer time to warm up the diesels. Do you folks use engine block heaters at all?
What's that, block heaters?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. Some of them, some of the older trucks, you know, need them, but for the most part, they, they do not.
Okay.
And what if you could just stay here while I ask this next question? To the area to the south, that is for the pipe and other kinds of equipment, and for the area to the north, which is for the building materials, can you be at all more specific than just to say that just generally it's going to be there? I mean, it seems to me that, you know, do you know where certain kinds of materials will be and that's where they're going to be? And would they be in bins or they just be open to the elements?
They, when you refer to bins, you mean just separation?
Separation, yeah, separation of the loam from the bark mulch. I mean, it's what I'm, what I, you know...
Yeah, I mean, there's enough space there. We wouldn't have to definitively separate them with, you know, with like an impervious object. You know what I mean? We would be able to just leave, you know, be... And it's not saying this would be completely full or completely empty at any time. You know, it'd be something if you had sixty yards of an excess material you couldn't bring directly to another job, you know, that you'd be able to stockpile.
And in those areas, you're not, you're not piling things like riprap or, or demolition material from another job, are you?
Would, well, define riprap and demolition.
Well, let's say, let's say you're in, in a job, you're doing some roadway excavation and you've got the, the top, you know, six inches of the roadway and you've put it up. Do you bring it here? Do you bring it, bring it someplace else?
Oh, so you're saying if we reclaim an asphalt road?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, there's something like that would just go to a recycling facility. We don't, we don't store or handle any asphalt or anything like that.
Okay.
The same with demolition. If we tore down a house, it gets directly loaded into a truck and brought to...
And tree stumps and things like that?
This is all coming from another project. That's where all these questions are coming from, just so you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, no, those get brought to a facility. Yeah, we don't handle, you know, we don't, you know, we just, we typically carry over material that would be of use to us on another job, like a structural material or like loam that you would use to, you know, to grow grass in.
Okay, that's helpful. And then just going down further, because that was all mostly about the building material, but your piping, just explain a little more of what, what materials are going to be down in that south, southern corner or the triangle?
I mean, typically it would be stuff like if we had a hundred feet of pipe ordered for a job and we used sixty of it, you know what I mean? It would just be placed where, where that remaining pipe would go until we use it on the next job.
So mostly this is an area of interim laydown?
Yeah, that's a good way to put it, sure.
You're not expecting materials to be there for an extended period of time?
No, no, we paid for them, they cost money, we want to sell them.
I see.
Yeah, yeah, so...
All right.
Considering you might have nighttime operations, is there any need to change the lighting plan that's on the site right now?
We don't intend to have nighttime operations.
Okay. Well, snow plow operations will be some material in and out.
What do you mean, as far as...
Or trucks going in and out for snow plowing perhaps?
I guess it'd be, to get back to your lighting question, could you point out where you're putting lights on there, just to help people?
We're all using the existing lights that's out there. There's a light in the front of the building. There's a light in the back of the building. There's a light on a pole here. A light on a pole here. And a light on a pole...
And some of those were sensors, weren't they?
I think on the building itself, there's sensors. I think the poles go on with them.
Existing.
So I guess the question that is leading from these two questions is, so if someone is dropping some building material off in the northern part of the site, there's really no lighting there? They just drive in in their trucks?
They just drive in with their truck?
With their truck, with their truck lights?
Yeah.
Drop it off and go?
If it's a trailer or a machine, they'll unload it and drive out, right?
I would...
Same with the plows. You know, they use the lights from the truck to hook up a plow if it's night, you know, whatever might happen.
I have three questions.
Okay.
All right. The back of the site, does, does it not go to Middle Road, does it?
The back of this site?
Yeah. Where's Middle Road? I didn't, I was just making sure, there's no entrance off of Middle Road, right?
Middle Road's where Tom is.
No entrance. Because that was one of the concerns that came to me was, was there only going to be one front entrance? I believe that's...
There's only one, yeah, one entrance, existing entrance.
So it's one entrance. And where, I understand how it's difficult to kind of nail down the hours of operation and the concerns with like the backup beeping. Where, I don't know if we have the ability, but if they could use as much as possible that circular motion and going around the building, I think that would cut down a lot of the concerns that people have with the neighbors.
So really, it's how the site is managed?
Yeah, I mean, that would, I see that being the biggest concern that you're, complaints you're going to have right now and you can definitely work with it to avoid it.
Sure, yeah.
As far as the lights that was handled, the traffic goes back to all that. I think if you consider where they're putting their business and it's in the business lane, industrial drift district, to have this type of traffic coming in and out, it's the most appropriate probably district we have for doing so, especially being on Route 1. So, yeah, the entrance, the business hours, the traffic, and you're not installing any more lights. So, okay. George?
I'm all set.
All set.
And you said as far as a sign, sign is concerned, you're going to use the existing sign and reface it?
That's correct.
Will it be possible for us to actually get some sort of a sketch of what it's, what it's going to look like?
Yeah, we could work with the sign company and have them do something.
She's asking, but I'm requiring.
Yeah.
Then we can definitely do it.
Okay. We unfortunately have had some poor signs in the past, so that's why.
Yep, we'll work with...
If I remember correctly, the, I, I like, I like, these are going to be Arbivati, right?
Right, yeah.
And I think we said last time, as, as tall as you can make them. But in front of them, you've got Fragmities, am I right?
That's correct.
So are you going to deal with those in any way or...
Yeah, we're going to leave them.
You have Jeff go down there and take them out, right?
Right.
Somebody just did a little pass by them. I noticed somebody just moved them.
When we did the north threading transportation, didn't we require them to do maintenance? Was that because it was a new drainage area they had for...
But, well, they had to do a little detention pond there.
So that's a requirement?
Yeah.
Because that's, they had to get rid of the Fragmities.
Right, so they had a whole stormwater.
But that's not going to be an issue here?
That's not going to be an issue here, because they're not doing any changes.
Yeah. Do you have other questions?
There, there have been some concerns brought up by abutters and I'm sure they'll talk about it, about noise and also views from people who live on, on Adams Lane. Has there been any discussion about possible screening from that side as well?
Well...
And can you give us a sense of, you've got stored materials there. Any sense of volume, how high?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't know how to answer the question about how high, but, you know, as far as screening, if we put a six-foot fence up, you know, an excavator is, how tall is an excavator?
Well, it depends on which one, but I mean, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't...
It's not going to, the only thing that's going to screen is like a low-bed trailer or, or something like that. The, the thing, you know, like excavators, you know, even the trucks, you know, they're almost thirteen feet high, so you're really not going to screen that out.
Yeah, one of the things we don't know, because we're, we haven't looked at that in detail, meaning, meaning we haven't. The folks in the neighborhood will probably bring it up, but we just don't know what the sightlines are.
Right.
You know, and until we hear and go, maybe go out and take a look, we don't know if it's feasible or not, just don't know.
Yeah, I mean, this, you know, it obviously is a large wetland and, you know, the big growth has died. So there is not, you know, a lot of big growth in here, which I'm sure there was at some point.
Right. Okay, so the board's had questions and then we'll open it up to public comments, questions, et cetera, and then we'll bring it back to the board. So if you have a question, just come up to the microphone, identify yourself and let's hear your comment.
All right, and also please give your address.
Give your name and address.
My name's Carl Democat. I live at thirty-nine Middle Road. And I'm here kind of representing three homes, thirty-seven, thirty-nine A and thirty-nine B. Our homes are directly behind this little river. And for years, we had significant problems with the prior container people in terms of the, well, first of all, when the beavers damaged a lot of the trees, it got rid of a lot of the foliage that blocked those containers. But the noise from those containers was terrible, particularly early in the morning. And as time went on, we began seeing the containers building up high. And with the reduced foliage, we could see them very clearly, particularly in the winter. And one of my questions would be, what type of zoning change is required for these folks to have this? And potentially, what would that mean for someone else who took over the property in terms of what kind of use they could put that to?
Would you want to answer that? This is not a zoning change, correct?
Right, it's not, it's not a zoning change. This is the, the headquarters, as a site contractor, that's an allowed use. It's going through process now for two reasons. One is a site plan review approval and there are things like parking and, and that kind of this, on the site, which require the site plan, trigger the site plan review. And it's going for a special permit because they are planning to store raw materials out in the open and that requires a special permit. It's not allowed by right, but it is allowed by special permit under the zoning. So there is no zoning change per se.
I think, I think one of the things that we would like to see addressed is possibly putting some foliage, maybe possibly trees, along the backside that would block the view for both Adams Lane and, and our area. Just out of curiosity, what, what size trees are you planting?
In the front?
Yeah.
You need, I apologize, but the people on TV can't hear you, so you have to go to the microphone.
No, see, that's the problem. Tom's got to answer that.
Yeah.
We're proposing five to six-foot trees that is fifteen feet long centers.
So it's going to be years before they really...
Yeah, I mean, it will be, you know, before they're fifteen feet high, it'll be a while.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, again, noise was one of our concerns. I actually drove over to Jesse's facility and met with you and your father. And frankly, I came away pretty satisfied with their operation. I, I didn't want to see huge mounds, but in terms of this being the storage area for sand, gravel, rock, I don't think that's going to be a particular problem for us because it, we're moreover in this direction. And the equipment, I think, is, is workable and doable. But if there's anything that potentially could be done in terms of possibly trees at some point, we'd love to see that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Michelle, eighty-one Middle Road, Newbury.
What's your address?
Eighty-one Middle Road.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to just make note of, in the back here, the last five years, I've been coming to the town hall and Maureen, Mrs. Heffernan here, has been coming to the town hall and we've just come to, we've just got the problem fixed with the beavers as Mr. Democat was saying. And my land is actually just dried out. I have got five acres that was totally like ruined. I, my trees, everything, so I see all of what's going on out there. And the stream that you're talking about, that's back here, that's on that property, is what, is part of what caused that. And there's done extensive work through the town and Doug and we, I believe, is it a beaver deceiver in there now? There was a beaver deceiver in there now and whatnot. And I guess my question is, is this person going to make sure that this isn't going to happen again? Because I get that the beavers caused it, but there was also a lot of debris and whatnot, crushed stone that was in, which was causing the beavers.
So that would, that helps us if you could explain what the previous owner did that you think caused the problem?
Well, we don't know. It's just, go ahead, explain that part.
All right, well, my name's Maureen Heffernan and I live at eleven Adams Lane. And there, basically, I live like right here, on the, at the end of Adams. And so we've been monitoring the beavers and the beaver damage for quite some time. And we discovered that at some time, I don't know the details, but crushed stone was dumped into the stream, which created an area for the beavers to create their dam and so forth. So with Michelle's hard work and working with the town, we finally have that area cleaned up. As Michelle said, they put in a beaver deceiver piping system and it seems to be working really well. We're just concerned that if that's disrupted in any way, if anything's dumped into that stream, it's just going to create more problems. And, uh, you, and when you go out and look at the site and see this whole area is all dead, all the.
Is, is that beaver deceiver the same thing that was just at, they built by the McDonald's house? Or is that something different?
It's something different.
Something different, okay.
Yeah, there's a trapper.
So your concern is just that, that nothing, that he maintains the site and that nothing is disturbed?
Nothing's dumped, nothing's disturbed. But that's, that's really not my only concern, my, my concern, and I'm, I can say I'm also speaking for two other neighbors on Adams Lane that couldn't be here tonight, we are very concerned about noise. I'm really concerned to hear that they are, you know, could be leaving at four-thirty in the morning. I mean, I, I literally live, like, right here, there's no barrier anymore, the trees are all dead. There's nothing there, just some shrubs. So if they're, you know, plowing all night long, I'll hear it. The construction that took place over here, this past summer on the other side of Route One, it was so loud in my house, I could have all the windows closed and I could hear just the banging, the banging, the banging, and the trucks and the beeping and the, so if I heard it on the other side of the road.
That, that site is a very bad example, that is an applicant that we've had problems with, so. I'm, I'm just saying that that was not something that we'd like to see go, that, that smoothly.
Let's make sure we're talking about the right site, it's not, it's not the daycare that's going in.
No, no, it's, it's the one that's.
It's.
It's partially, it's partially, partially completed.
Yes.
They, they put a foundation in?
Yes, yeah, so, and I, I understand that, but it was still a lot of noise. If, my point is, they're further from my house, and I still heard all the noise. So if somebody gets up, comes into this site at four-thirty in the morning and starts moving trucks around, dumping debris, whatever, I'm going to hear it, and my neighbors are going to hear it, and all of Adams Lane is going to hear it. Michelle will hear it on Middle Road, so, because the beavers, basically, I would say, took out a good hundred trees in this area.
Really?
Drive down to the end of Adams Lane. So, that's my.
So this comes back to the whole, um, traffic coming into the site? And whether it, and how it's managed?
Managed, and the noise that comes from it, but thank you. Yes, sure, yes, you may.
It's, it's, just to make sure that you understand as well, the, what ERA was doing over there, they're doing construction on their own site, you know, they're building, a building, we, we're not, we're not going to be building any of that.
They were getting rid of bedrock, they were, like, pounding the rock up there, chipping away.
Yeah, yeah, they were hammering rock, yeah, that's not something that's going to take place here, we're just, we're using it to, to work out of, not work on, you know what I mean?
But she was associating the house, she could hear the noise from the location, the distance wise, and you're closer.
Yeah, no, sure, but I just wanted to make sure it was something that, you know, we wouldn't show up there first thing in the morning and dump out a truck or anything like that, I mean, um, you know, if it's going to be something that's early in the morning, it's going to be somebody coming in and departing from the site, there's really not a lot of work that takes place on the site. It's not, you know, we don't go there and start.
You have to load your trucks up, don't you, so the question is, is, if you're going to load your trucks up in the morning?
Well, typically, if we, if we needed something, but I mean, we wouldn't load a truck up at four-thirty in the morning. Most of the time, those trucks that are traveling to get somewhere are something that is, you know, going long distance to go somewhere, not typically, you know.
I'm under the impression that the off-hours would be more during the winter when it, plowing season?
It would, but, you know, we wanted to also make sure that, you, you know, I wouldn't step into a room and tell you guys, "Don't worry, you won't hear anything, it'll all be fine," you know what I mean? I would never want to say, it's, it's, it's going to be silent, we'll be the invisible neighbor. I'd rather sell you the worst-case scenario and then have you go, "Jesus, this guy's not that bad," you know what I mean? That's.
Smart of you.
More along the line, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to sell you a false bag, that's for sure, so it's.
Is there anything your company can do to help?
She, so, you can't hear you, you can't hear you.
Is there, is there anything your company can do to help, you know, with the no, create some kind of noise barrier in the back of the property?
I'm sure there is, and that's something that, with Tom's helping, you know, I guess the board will have to look into then.
Yeah, what, what, what we're going to sugge, first of all, is there anyone else who'd like to come up and, and jump? Why don't you come up forward? And your name and address again?
John Coliano, we live at five Adams Lane, uh, right next to Maureen and Patrick. Again, we are concerned about the noise, s- uh, very concerned about the site, uh, the visuality of it, because, again, to reiterate, the beavers wiped out this whole area, so from not seeing any of the containers, we see most of them all now.
Right.
The storage over here, you know, I don't think anyone's going to have a problem with, it's going to be behind everything. What we're mostly concerned about is that burn falling into the, the river, whatever it is, and then the beavers just wreaking havoc again. If maybe if that could be something solid, as opposed to stone dust, or, you know, I mean.
The idea of the burn is so that water will go through, but silt and, and, and it washed would not, so that, that's really.
You don't think the water would wash the stone dust into the river?
It's not stone dust, it's crushed stone.
Oh, oh.
It's more of a filter, right?
It's actually crushed stone with a filter fabric over it.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, it's not like a, a stone dust burn.
And then when you describe these wetland, or, um, river barriers, buffer zones?
Yep.
What are they buffering from? Like, what's, you're not allowed to build inside that? Are you not allowed to store stuff inside it?
Well, you have existing use, so this is a redevelopment, so if it was new construction, it'd be a lot more limited than you are under.
Right. You know, I, and I, I'm in the construction business and I know Jesse, and we've used his company all the time. So I understand what they do, but as a neighborhood, we're very concerned with the noise. And if there was anything that could be done here, like, I don't know, some type of wall or a noise something or other, you know, who knows what's out there that could be used, it'd be very helpful. Also, the, the plowing in, in the middle of the winter is going to be an issue as well. Maureen and Patrick's house, like she says, is right here, they have three kids, and if, you know, there are trucks running in there at four o'clock in the morning, they got to get up to school at seven, I mean, it's just an inconvenience for the kids. So our most, our main concern is, is noise, so I mean, if that could be addressed somehow, on this barrier, I think everyone would be a little more happy. Now, Mary, do you, Mary, do you have any other?
I'm marrying a wall.
Yeah, just a wall or a mission, so.
Thanks, John.
So I'm Patrick Heffernan, I'm also at eleven Adams Lane. Again, we're the closest physical house to the site right here. To, to reiterate what John and, and Maureen and Michelle said, this idea of putting the trees down here, and I, I fully appreciate, you put five-foot trees there, they're going to take a long time to grow. You're not going to block the, the very large construction vehicles that are on the property, and I understand we're not going to be able to get around not seeing them, but over time, at least, the noise will be diminished by the trees growing, at least aesthetically, it will look a little bit better. And there's, by the looks of this, there's plenty of space on the other side of the stream to actually do something. It is difficult to drive down Adams Lane and see this property right now, it looks a lot different than it was when we bought that house, s- eight years ago, seven years ago, and I'm sure, Michelle, it was even longer than that, so. It would be fantastic if there was something that was different there, because you're not responsible for the beavers that did all that damage, however, that damage is done, and it's difficult for us there now. And in terms of the noise, and I fully appreciate, it's, in the wintertime, it's when there's a big snow, so it's not going to be every single day that you're going to have that kind of noise, but to reiterate what Michelle said, if there's a way that, um, your operations day-to-day can account for the fact that our house is right there, then in the wintertime, when you have to plow, it's a lot easier for me to understand that beeping and all that noise in the winter, when there's a huge snowstorm, if during the rest of the year, I'm not hearing it all the time, so. I just appreciate you take that into account, thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
And just, just to make it clear, as far as the, as far as the plowing goes, most of these vehicles are going to start up and, and leave. It's not plowing within the yard. Most of the time, our, all of our yards, they're, they're the last ones to get plowed, and it's because we're servicing everybody else, so. Most of the time, it's going to be the guys that'll, you know, make a pass out the yard, just so somebody could get in and out, and it's, there's, very, very rarely will we probably be plowing in the yard during a snowstorm or overnight, and we absolutely would do that, that wouldn't be a problem, it would just be, you know, to make sure we could get in and out of the yard, and then, you know, plow the yard during the day and stuff like that, that, so it's, don't misconstrue that as far as when, when we talk about plowing, that it would be us in that yard at two o'clock in the morning plowing, because that's just unnecessary. So it's, you know, it'd just be us leaving, like I said, in the morning to go, I mean, excuse me, whatever time we get called to go out, so. And most of the time, most, all the pickups, it's really only five trucks that would be out plowing that would be of any noise that you'd notice, and they go out to ninety-five and they're there, you know, kind of like the Dunkin' Donuts commercial, they're almost out there before, you know, the snow flies, and they don't get knocked off until way long after they should. Um, the rest of them are pickup trucks, and most of the time, the guys take them home, because they, they live all over Newbury, Rowley, Salisbury, and, you know, so it's not, and most of our plowing is going to be in Rowley, we're moving from Rowley to Newbury, so our operation is still going to be mostly in Rowley as far as the plowing goes, unless it's the trucks that are on ninety-five. So, those guys are probably going to all keep them in Rowley anyway.
So I assume the, the plows themselves are already got the, the trucks, have the plows on them, you're not putting the plows on them early in the morning?
The ones that go out from, on ninety-five, have them on them all year, they don't come off, yeah, and it's, there won't be anything, yeah. All the plows get put on during the day, when you can see, you know, and they'll just kind of, they'll leave as they go, so. And as far as the beavers go, that's, that won't be a problem, first of all, we, we can't put anything in that stream. Yeah.
Yeah.
We won't, yeah.
They're not allowed to.
We can't, we won't, and that's, that won't, as far as, as far as, you know, abutters go with access to that, and, and, and working with you guys as far as making sure they're taken care of, I think it's in all of our best interest to make sure that doesn't happen again, as far as the trees, the, everything, so it's, I mean, good thing Doug's not here, but they're, they're not welcome.
Thanks, nope, well, anyone else want to say something?
You know, I, I was just thinking, maybe the resources that are going to be used to plant all these trees, to beautify the site from Route One, which is, you know, kind of silly, you're driving by it at fifty-five miles an hour, it can be used. You know, to, to help us out.
I think you should do both.
Well, like I said, it's a cost thing, so.
We, we, uh, just, just, uh, ju, the response to that, this area is an area that you all know has been underutilized and, uh, with some, with some marginal businesses over time. We have been trying in the last couple of years, we did a major rezoning to encourage more development out here, and so part of that upgrade, uh, it's going to be slow, but is in fact to make things look a little better, to make it more attractive for other people to invest, as, as opposed to having areas where riprap is falling out into the roadway, which I saw today in a couple of other areas, is to make it look better, so that, in fact, it's more investment, uh, in all up and down Route One. So that's the concept, okay? Go ahead.
I'm Miriam, I live at five Adams Lane, and I, I'm restating the whole noise problem, and I'm wondering if it's possible if a noise barrier could be put in that area.
I'm not familiar with the cost, but I would expect that to be extremely expensive, you would know better than me.
Well, um, we'll, we'll, we'll get, I'll tell you what, what we're going to do. We, we can't take action tonight because we're missing a board member, and we're supposed to have five, but our fourth member is away.
We're going to do a site visit anyways.
So we're going to schedule a site visit, uh, and Martha will coordinate it with, we're the developer and the owner, or, or Tom and, and you folks, or whoever you want to be there, and we'll make sure that whoever from the community wants to be there, and we'll schedule it probably within the next week to ten days, is that right, or two?
Yeah, try to do it before our next meeting, which is October first.
Yeah, so we may try to do it next week. Um, and we'll hopefully pick a day that's nice and, and it's not raining, of course, we've been blessed with that lately anyway, but. And we'll, you know, we take, can take anywhere between a half hour to an hour and a half to walk and understand what your issues are, and then walk on the property and understand how the property owner might be able to respond to these things. So we'll, we'll do that hopefully by the middle of next week, all right? And so Martha will schedule it, do you have everyone's address?
Um, I've got everyone's address, um, it might be helpful if maybe one person could be kind of the, the point person for the, the abutters. Okay. That would be great, yeah, phone number and email.
But then, all of, I mean, the purpose of it is for the board to familiarize themselves with the issues that have been raised tonight, but also to hear again freshly from what your concerns are, okay? Tom?
Okay, I think the, the only caveat to that is, I'm going to need to get the owner's permission for abutters.
Right.
Right.
To access the property.
Right.
Obviously, the board, by submitting, can, but, other than that, there's no problem.
I'm not ready to close yet.
No.
We can't.
All right.
No.
Do we have the ability to require, like, how they're, where they're going to park their trucks, or the direction to be one-way, going to rooms?
What we, what we can do, uh, yes, we can do a lo, a number of things, we can talk about the operation and maintenance of the facility, we can talk about a number of things, I mean, all within reason, I mean, we, we've heard a lot of things about noise, and those things that can mitigate that, which the proponent thinks that they can do, um, I think that we can.
So I.
We can, we can do that.
You come across like a nice man. Um, unfortunately, we've had people who come across like nice people, and then they leave their room, and they do a complete opposite. So my thing is, is I'm going to make sure we document what we're approving, just so you know, so when you come back next time, we're going to be putting it in the special permit and in the site plan. This is what you said you were going to do, so if something else happens, other than that, call you back.
I just, I just wanted to, uh, say that we've been operating out of a, uh, commercial property in a residential neighborhood right now since nineteen ninety-five, and we've never had a problem, we've never had the police called on us, we've never, so.
Okay.
And are you going to come back with any, um, new ideas?
Oh, yeah, we'll definitely look into it, I think we'll probably wait till the site walk.
Yeah, I think so.
To see what, you know, everybody has to say, and, um, you know, I think, you know, one thing, not to just keep batting this around, but this area here, which is obviously the, the major concern, is the area that we have the least impact. I mean, the, you know, we're talking about low-bed storage, you know, pipe storage, things like that, you know, that, a low-bed is what, four feet? Not even four feet high, um, so, you know, we did, just so everybody knows, we, we did give some thought, like, not to put this over here and that over there, I mean, that's, that's how we laid out the site.
When you say, you mean a low-bed truck?
A low-bed trailer that, you know, a machine goes on top of.
Mm-hmm.
That's what this area is.
Okay, well, when we go out there, we can, do you have that kind of thing down at your, uh, other facility that we can see what this low-bed thing and how low it really is?
We, we can have one on the site for you, how's that?
Yeah, bring one on, bring one on the site so we can see it, okay?
We can do that.
Okay, great, great. Is that all right with everybody?
Do we want to set a time for a meeting now, or?
She's going to, yeah, she will.
Can we set it for, for, uh, you know, I mean, uh, trying to think of the time next week.
I'm out Thursday and Friday.
You're out next Thursday and Friday, but it's got to be Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, and I think I can do Wednesday.
Okay, shall we try for Wednesday?
I don't have, I don't have my calendar with me.
So what do you want to do? We have to do it before the next meeting?
Yeah, let's do it next Wednesday, which would be the twenty-fourth?
It won't be, well.
You're not here?
Uh, I'll be here, but I will not be available the next meeting.
Right.
Right.
I'll be out of country.
Oh, wait a minute, well, how do we make a decision?
So we can ever hold a meeting before then? When are you leaving?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Right, but he'll be gone on the first, which is the board's next meeting. But you're, you're going to be submitting, what, an NOI or an RDA?
RDA.
RDA, to the ConCom, so they won't be hearing that until their, until the third week of October.
He's gone.
This Saturday?
George?
We're okay then.
No.
Oh, you do the site visit? Do you want to do a site visit this Saturday?
If we do it this weekend, we can, everybody will be there, and then you could hold a meeting next Wednesday and kind of like get this all going, so that we can.
We could have a special meeting?
Well, John, John would need to be back, um, I'm not quite sure what his schedule is.
John O'Connell.
John O'Connell, if, if you want to, we need four members to vote on the decision, the other question is, will the board feel comfortable making a decision before this has been heard by the Conservation Commission?
When, no, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to do that, we can't schedule a meeting if John's, we don't know John's schedule.
So may, maybe that, maybe that we'll really have to wait for you to get back, when do you get back?
On the seventh of October, so that's before the next meeting after.
And our, and our second meeting in October is?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, which would be.
Well, that's not that bad, that's not that bad. Okay.
And the ConCom won't hear it until?
After that.
After that, probably, although they have to reschedule because their meeting right now is scheduled for the same day's town meeting.
So we have to?
We can make our decision contingent upon ConCom issues.
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah.
I don't think we should drag this out.
No, I don't want to, I, I think that, you know, I, I really want to see the site, I want to see what might be able to be done and to mitigate some of these issues, and, um, so let's do it as soon as we can.
So.
So should we?
Site visit.
Shall we try for next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, can you, can you reach the owner and confirm that we can?
Yep, I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And aim for the morning, I think. Right, nine o'clock, nine-thirty, something like that, I mean.
A Wednesday?
Wednesday, yeah, and you will not be here.
I will not be here.
So it's, well, it'll be the two of us and you, so I think that's okay.
Right, and John may be back by then.
Okay, all right.
John's pretty familiar with the site.
One other option would be to do it on Saturday?
Saturday's fine.
You're here on Saturday?
Yes.
Is that too quickly?
This Saturday?
Yeah.
I will be here.
Oh, that's not good, you have to be there, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
No, you got to be there, next Wednesday, okay. Aim, aim for nine-ish, and then?
So I'll confirm tomorrow.
With, with Martha, okay?
Yep, okay.
So just to sum up, I'm going to, I'd like just to sum up the concerns, so again, we're looking at noise, um, visual.
Yep.
Traffic patterns on the site, those are the three major concerns.
Right, and to the extent to which both physical improvements and operations and management, O and M can address those.
Okay.
I think they're all doable.
All doable, thanks so much.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you all, everybody.
The board needs to vote to continue the public hearing?
Yes, so.
Make a motion? Want a second, Ed?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, to a time and date certain.
To, um.
That hearing is?
Uh, October fifteenth.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, okay, Tom, it's continued, public hearing is continued to October fifteenth at seven fifteen, all right? Okay, give them a chance to.
Did everybody say aye?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we're still on the air, guys. Excuse me? Excuse me if you wouldn't mind clearing the room, 'cause we're still, have our meeting and we're on TV. Thank you.
Could I?
Aye. Okay, so we've done Richard. Okay, so let's go back and talk about the Municipal Building Committee report. Let's just close, close the doors. So, as a preamble for you, Richard and Carla, last week, we had a presentation from the chair. Chair? Yes. From the Municipal Building Committee, which is looking to put a new police station and a new town hall someplace. Did you see it? So, okay, so, we had a extensive discussion about it, but I think that if I can, I mean, if I'm looking at the meeting minutes, the meeting minutes in summary say that we as a board believe that the municipal govern, government function has traditionally been in the upper green, and that we believe that that function ought to remain in the upper green area. And that there is a strong relationship between the police, who exercise the police power, and the town hall, which exercises the governance of the, of the town. And for that to be separate, we think, we thought would be a problem. And so, I think that we concluded, without saying it should be new or a rehab, that those two functions ought to be in the upper green area, and they ought to be together. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay. So, if that's where we wound up, I guess the question, the only two questions that I had on these, which I was pressing Eric on, was that in the event that a relocation is required for either a new construction option or a rehab option, that I was concerned about that that was not costly, and that it wasn't disruptive to the functions of the policing and of the government. And, and, so, I don't know if you all feel this as strongly about it as I do, but I really am concerned about that because it could add significant, both real dollars and real costs of the efficiency of government, and I'd like to make sure that...
If they're separated, or if they're...
No, either way.
If for 18 months to two years, the Martha and Tracy and all of the police functions are moved someplace. And what would the cost of that be to either rent a new facility, or is there a facility around? And so, I think that I would encourage Eric to have that answered.
Yeah.
That's all. Because I think that there's gonna be issues with it. I mean, if I have issues, I'm sure that many, many people do.
Yeah, I expressed those same concerns at the last meeting, and the numbers, the costs were not included in Eric's numbers.
Right.
They were missing, and that could be significant.
So, I think that if we, and there's one other aspect of it, and, and it was not brought up so much in our meeting, but it was the, the meeting that Martha and I attended with the Finance Committee. And that is the, what is, what would, what do we know are the costs of operating and maintaining their buildings today? And what is the projected cost of operating the new buildings?
Interesting.
And, and so, they raised that because they're the Finance Committee. You know, it's not really a planning board issue. But I think both of them, both of those issues might be cautionary items in anything we send to Eric. So, I guess, Martha, since you were on the committee, what form do you think that this ought to take? On the assumption that what I've just said ought to be in a letter of sorts. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
So, with that, I'll work on a letter, and I'll send it around, hopefully within the next...
I think everybody has the same feeling, so...
Yeah, but I'll, I'll work on a letter. It doesn't have to be long, does it? No. And, and I'll circulate it to everyone so you can comment on it.
Good.
Okay?
Just as a footnote to that, there, there is most likely gonna be a meeting of the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, and the Planning Board, and the Municipal Building Committee to discuss the project, to try to get everybody all on the, on the same page, so...
Right, and, and so that leads to another question I had, which was, what is Eric going to do at town meeting?
I think at town meeting, his hope is to, you know, essentially give, give a report on where, you know, where things stand at the moment, probably summarize the recommendations that have been put out there. Again, make a, you know, try to help people understand what the, what the real need is, particularly for the police station.
Not look for directions specifically.
But not look for direction, yeah.
It's more informative.
Good, good, good.
It's more informative, yeah, it's, it's too, it's really too early, and there, there are other ideas that are still out there.
Okay. Caldwell Farm. Might you have an interest in that? Now, I know that you're right, and I saw your letter that you would recuse yourself on any of these issues, but let, let me report out to the television community as well, that Martha and I did meet with the board today. I think it was a positive meeting. I think that one of the major things that came up, we showed a, a preliminary trail map, which is basically similar to what we walked. There was some concern raised about our proposal to bring a connection out from the trail to a small parking area on Elm Street. And it was suggested that we take a look at, if you remember when we did the walk, and we wound up kind of confused behind those people's property on Elm Street? So, it suggested that we look at trying to get as, almost to the road that comes in from Triton, instead of the other, and we said we would do that. And we need to do that with Doug, because I didn't go down there. I don't know if you two did. Did you walk down with Doug?
I was over there, but I was picking up trash.
Yeah. And so, I was up at the High Point, and I didn't go down into, and so, I just don't know. Doug came back and said, "We're not going in there, it's too wet." And so, we need to go back out with Doug, and we'll notify the board when that is, and it's probably gonna be in mid-October, once the leaves are kind of down off the trees, stuff like that. We'll see, so... And, anyone add anything to that?
No, I think we covered it.
Okay. The subdivision break, so this could either be quick or laborious.
Can we do that for last?
Okay.
It's not very interesting.
Well, the preamble, I don't, I mean, we've done this two weeks in a row. I'm not sure, unless anyone wants to bring anything else up?
I was gonna ask, is this a constant item on the agenda, or is this...
No, I think it was put on, I'm not sure why, but I'm, I think that we wanna revisit this after town meeting.
Yeah, I think so. I just put it on there in case there was any other discussion.
But I think we've talked this through. I mean, we've, we've talked through Route One, we've talked through the Lower Green, we've talked through all of these areas that we, the master plan. I guess that, a question I have on the master plan is that, it's not so much a question. We're gonna meet with a consultant. Martha and I will meet with a consultant next week to get a better sense of both the scope of services and price. And then, the warrant for town meeting for the master plan has got to be done by the October 7th.
Actually, the warrant is essentially closing new items for the warrant. The deadline is, is the 22nd of September, and the Selectmen will vote on the warrant on the 23rd.
Okay, so, who does that? Tracy, just, it's already in there? Does the FinCom already?
I haven't seen it. I, I would assume, which is always dangerous, but I would assume that the Finance Committee will be making their recommendations.
Would you just check with Tracy tomorrow? And then, the language for it should be us.
What are you talking about?
Don't you think?
The funding.
Funding, right, what? I'm sorry.
We don't have anything on the agenda, though, for our board, right?
The master plan, just the master plan.
Right, right. But it's the fu, the funding for the master plan.
Funding for the master plan, which was put off from the Spring Town Meeting.
You're just making sure it's on there.
Making sure it's on there, but the Fin, Finance Committee and we, meaning Martha and I have worked on along with David, we have a, you know, a two-page scope, but I think we need to refine that a bit and, and make sure that the FinCom is comfortable with it, and that we have a price that we feel comfortable with. That's the thing. So, we, I think we're all set then. Do you think so, Martha?
I think so.
Just check tomorrow. And that might be...
That'll be great.
Yeah, it would be. Oh, did you send to the, to Frank Remley the copy of the, remember what we went over with him? Did you send him a...
I didn't send him, I thought we'd sent it to him already, but I didn't send him a second copy. And I, well, as a follow-up to his, he needed...
He, if you saw his, his cover memo on his minutes, that he wanted the, you know, the, the copy of the, of the implementation plan.
Right. Okay, all right.
In color. So, if you could get that to him tomorrow, 'cause I think he wants to send his minutes out of his meeting. Then after we met with him, Eric was there, and so it was the same kind of... I think that might be it. Just amazed that I can even...
101.
101.
101.
Your return bike is next.
Well, it's not 101, it's 108, isn't it?
Uh, no, 101, Angelo. We, we were just talking about inviting, it's time to invite him back into the, for an update, because he's been sitting...
Yeah, see, I don't have that, I don't have that one. We need to invite him in. I know you've all driven by...
I haven't seen it lately, why, what's going on?
Oh, it's just nothing.
But they were making good progress there for a while.
It hasn't done anything in at least three or four months.
Based upon the weeds.
All right.
Yeah. Do you know the property we're talking about? Yeah, it's, it's right across the street from this property we were just talking about, which has got all the trailers on it. And this is a developer, or contractor who came in and with a plan to put his storage yard there, but also to build a major, I mean, pretty big for us, anyway, a major...
Building with birch trees?
With birch, I mean, and he was approved in December of 2012, and he's not gotten much progress, so we're very concerned about it.
It's not even the progress. It's, it's what he's doing, he's done things where it's concerned ConCom, to the point where DEP was getting notified.
Yes, it wasn't, wasn't you guys, it's, it's another project.
Filling the site with inappropriate materials.
Right.
Yeah.
Did you find out further about...
I didn't have a chance to check into that after I got back, so, but I will.
So, the, the question is, the, according to the site, site plan review criteria...
Timeframe, isn't it?
Timeframe is, is up in two years. So, it would be up in December, 'cause that's when the decision was made. However, Martha believes that there may have been an extension, because the state during the recession made exceptions for projects that were in, in, in progress.
Right, that were approved, permitted between 2008 and 2012, it was the permitted extension.
And so, the question is whether or not this falls within that, we don't know. So, we either have a...
So, you're gonna ask Town Council before you call them in?
No, I think we should call them in.
Call them in anyway.
I think we should call them in anyway.
I think you should know, though, whether the extension's good or not. You're gonna have some leverage when he comes in, though, whether or not...
Right, we'll know that before he comes in.
All right.
But I think he owes the board an update.
He does. And then, Middle Road, I'm sorry, I didn't have this, I was using another.
I think it's...
No, I have this for now.
Oh, okay.
But I was using the other one. In fact, I was looking for it, because I know I said, you know, let's look at these. So, Middle Road, Borrego.
Yeah, but basically, it was just saying that they've, yeah.
And they're gonna move forward.
Good.
On the, I think it is good. I might clean it up a bit.
Now they're accepting stuff.
Let's go to the, so, Richard, we have been looking at our subdivision regulations, which are...
Badly need for a...
Badly need of revision. And John O'Connell, who normally sits here, and Martha have been working on this for about two years.
It says right here, 2005.
Yeah. And these are difficult documents, but assuming you're on the board, you'll get a copy of these things. And it's good reading, because it'll put, if you have a difficult time sleeping?
Right to sleep.
Unfortunately, it's one of those things normally, that it's hard to read through unless you have an application in front of you and really deploy it. Otherwise, it's...
It's very abstract.
It very, it really is, it really is.
That's why the term for planning boards, five years, and there's been talk of whether or not it should be reduced, but it really takes about five years to get done. And I've been doing it for almost close to a decade now, and it's still things that, you know, you learn.
So, let's, do we wanna do this page by page?
Oh, no.
All right, do you wanna do it person by person?
No, 'cause I don't have my, I left it at home, by mistake.
Well, that's not good.
I've got your, the copy you gave me, although part of it was cut off.
Well, another way is to, do you wanna bring up some issues?
I don't have as many as you probably, but mine are more, you know, you don't trust me for grammar, grammar or spelling or anything like that, but just basic concerns I had, and I had things I personally didn't understand. That's what I was kinda bringing up.
Well, what, if you didn't person, then why don't you just have a conversation with Martha about them? Do you know what I mean?
All right. No, I think that if I don't understand them, then nobody else will.
Probably true.
No, I'm not being, I really do. Like, for example, the frontage one, I looked up, you have, we, we don't have a definition currently for frontage, so one was pulled, and I went online, and it's a very common definition for frontage. However, when you get to a corner lot, it talks about the frontage should be measured from the midpoint radius of a corner curve, which I know how to figure out. I can look at, I was telling John, like, I did it right here, for this curve. Found the radius of the curve. Found out the midpoint, but okay, but how do you actually take the measurement from that point, once you figure it out?
Well, it'd be from the sideline of the property to the midpoint of the curve.
So, draw it for me, would you? But it's not the midpoint of the curve, it, they're saying the center line of the radius of the curve.
No, it's the center line of the, of the roadway.
It says, the cor, for a corner lot, the frontage should be measured to the midpoint of the radius of the curve. Now, I drove, the ra, the radius of the curve is shown there. Either street may be used to determine frontage.
Well, it would be, it's this point where you've got the, the tangent, so it's from the corner to, to there.
So, what's the midpoint of the radius, then?
It's...
Right there.
It's right there. I didn't draw it correctly, but it's right, it's...
On the radius itself?
It's on the radius itself.
So, but I'm saying you go across this way?
No.
No. It's on the curve itself.
So, right here?
Yeah.
But that's not the midpoint of the radius. This is the radius, right here. That's, that's the circumference of the circle.
So, it should be the arc of the curve.
The arc.
The arc of the curve.
But that's, but you understand how I'm confused with the definition?
I understand it.
But I, I looked it up, and they do have that in other bylaws, but they have diagrams, with the diagrams where in the bylaw.
Wait a minute, you don't always have a, an arc?
I think that the definition is written...
You don't always have a curve, do you, on a, on a corner lot?
Um, I think if they're being constructed now, you do.
Yes, you do now.
An old one, you might not.
I was just gonna say, I lived on several corner lots, and they're square. I was just gonna say, I lived on several corner lots and they're square.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they're right angles.
That's because you live in an older neighborhood, but now they have to have curves. So, I believe that the definition is written correctly, because there's so many out there that are, seem to be just like yours. I just don't understand how, how it's drawn. If we're gonna use this one, if there could be a little schematic to explain it, because the board should not understand it if we're gonna require, propose it to town. Do you understand?
Yeah, you're an engineer, yes?
That's why I know what, I know what the curve of the radius is, so that's why I figured it out.
Is, you take the radius and figure the diameter, and then use the arc on the diameter to pick out the distance. You measure the diameter, that section in the arc.
So it's the chord between it?
Yes.
That would be right here?
Right there.
That would be the end right there.
Mm-hmm.
See, this is where Richard can really help us out.
That's not, that's not the midpoint of the radius. This is the midpoint of the radius.
That's not right.
But that's what I'm saying, the way it's written, it doesn't make sense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, you are the engineer, rewrite it.
Alright. But there are things like these, you know?
Well, that's, that's not unimportant, so let's go through them.
Let's go through yours first.
Through mine first?
Yeah.
I'll give you one. There is a provision at the end of site plan review dealing with no signs within developments. In the sign bylaw, it says that you can have one ground sign for the permanent identification of a housing development of 12 or more dwelling units. And it gives the advertising display area of 20 square feet, and that is in G for agricultural, residential, and parker res...
That's not a, that's not a marketing sign?
No.
A housing development isn't a subdivision though, is it?
Permanent identification. Permanent identification of a housing development.
I would've thought it would be like an apartment building. Martha, how would you interpret that?
A housing development is either, it's housing.
Right.
Housing is broad, it can be a single-family home, it can be a condominium or it can be an apartment. That's all housing.
So say again, condominium?
Single-family, multifamily.
It can be a single-family? Wow, that needs to be corrected then.
Well, the question is, is where should it be corrected? I, my gut reaction would be it's probably on the sign bylaw.
Well, that, is that, that's not even under signs though, is it?
Yes.
Except signs.
So today, in this town, there are three, that I know of, three subdivisions.
Caldwell Farm, Fatherland Farm, and Colby Village.
Livingston Lane.
And Livingston Lane.
Okay.
And you have a sign for Colby?
No, we do not. We have a street sign.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have it, but the other three do have some kind of identification sign. And one is deteriorated.
Fatherland signs at one end does not exist.
But none of them were approved, I don't believe. They all went in after the patch.
They went in and the develop, well, Caldwell may have been approved.
I think that, I think that was approved. I'm not sure about Livingston Lane.
Because he's always done that. The one at Bartlett's Reach has got the sign, and the one down at English Commons has the sign.
Was though, because Powell would've been on there by then. He would've been on.
Not sure.
He's one of those people that are against it, that's why.
But I know that there was discussion about it, after I left the board, but...
Yeah. I mean, I'm not...
The question that Joe just bringing up is, if we're saying it's allowed, then how can we say it's not allowed in the subdivision?
There's a conflict that needs to be...
There's a conflict. And so which, which do we address? I think we address the sign code.
And allow it.
No.
No. Sean is saying, take it out.
Take it out.
Right.
Except, you know, the other way to do is under site plan, or the new, the subdivision regulations, just say, except as otherwise provided in related bylaws, like the sign regulations.
I hate all that stuff.
So do I. I used to do that.
We do that a lot in this now, because we reference so many things, the stormwater regulations and, boy, I'll tell you, it's tough on anybody who's not a professional. And these, this document is not meant for, you know, a person who's trying to do three lots on their own.
If I, I have an opinion and it would be to take that out of the sign regulations.
Yes.
Take that provision out.
I would concur with you. What else, anything? Ted?
Yeah.
What about you?
I don't know where this left off. One of the things we've talked about before is when we have a cul-de-sac, that we know that our length is very difficult, and we, whenever someone comes in to do a cul-de-sac, they always ask for waivers. And we went back and forth, and I think we said, leave the 500-foot length.
Right.
But I just wanna go through this again to make sure that's what the board wants to do, especially since we have a change of people and why we're doing it and why we set that length. It's, if we're going to have cul-de-sacs come in and we know they're gonna ask for a waiver, then why do we bother having it in there?
I think the other issue is that, that a lot of the land that is now, you know, potentially developable is marginal land and there are issues in terms of, you know, getting, getting access to the site. There are some where clearly the intention was to allow it to be developable in the future, but getting back there, the length is already more than 500 feet.
So I guess the question is, is why do we think that that was set for 500 feet? Was it because we're trying to limit the number of houses?
It was, had something to do with the length of a hose.
I, I think it's a fire department, first and foremost, I think it's a fire department criteria.
But if you're gonna have, but if you're gonna have a fire hydrant on the street down there, why does it matter?
Well, because sometimes you don't have a fire hydrant on the street.
And if you don't have municipal water, you're not gonna have a fire hydrant. You might have a storage tank.
You have a storage tank.
So, I'm just thinking this through.
And then...
So that was only, so that means that we are limiting two areas of town that could potentially, well, you're not gonna have enough Plum Island, so I guess that's out. Plum Island's out.
Right.
But by fields is being handicapped by this, because they do have water.
In some areas, not all of it.
And so do we up here, just a little bit.
Right. And again, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that we, I just think the logic behind it, there's really, it's just 500 feet and we're doing it because it's always been 500 feet.
Well, what, what, I think it'd be instructive to find out what other towns do.
Well, I, I was about to say, I actually recently found a document online which, which has the length of cul-de-sac from, I believe, most if not all communities in, and so what I could do is print that out or send that over to you and then you could see what...
I'd be surprised if you had things that, that were a lot longer than 500 feet.
I would not wanna leave it open-ended. You know, if you're gonna take 500 feet off, you just leave it wide open for anything? You can't, you have to have some limit.
Right, you have to put a limit on it and then people can request waivers, but 500 feet at this point may be unreasonably short.
But like your road, I don't think that makes it. That doesn't make it. Think about, your road's only 500 feet?
Well, it's less than that, but then we have a driveway off of the cul-de-sac.
That's what it is.
The driveway's 300 feet.
Okay. Alright. Well, so the question is, is does the board wanna look into it or just keep it?
No, I'm happy to look into it.
I think it should be looked into.
Yeah.
And I thought about this, so this must be the way that, this is drawn for the, this is the way it's drawn. So you're taking the radius, midpoint, and you go right across and you're attaching it. So you're taking the measurement from here to there, to there. So why don't you count the curve?
I don't have the answer to that.
I think you're supposed to count the curve.
I think you're supposed to count the curve.
I don't think, that's what it's saying.
Anyway, it's a question that Martha and John need to answer. Is that from John?
That was actually from both of us.
Okay.
And there, it was based on definitions of frontage.
That you found?
Yeah.
That you'd found?
It was very common. I found multiple of them, so by no means do I think it was written incorrectly.
Okay.
It was just a matter of what they tend to the board is. Mine's more numbers. This other stuff when it comes down to. What did you have in there?
I think the major question I had was at the end. We, and, and I think I want this, but I just wanna make sure that we're all okay with it, because I think it is the major change in the document. And at, at one time, if you look at the approved bylaw, when you get into the inspections, they are exceedingly prescriptive. You know, it says, for site visit one, we're gonna look at grubbing and landscaping. For site visit two, we'll look at curves. For site visit three, we'll do this. For, and it has nine site visits, inspections, that are listed out. And we go from that kind of prescription, I mean, which takes four pages or three pages to write, to something which is quite general and talks about, well, you know, it's up to the applicant to figure out when they really wanna do these inspections. And here are the kinds of things that could be included, but there could be more than that. And, on a way, I'm a, came from a, I like that. As a developer. But I'm not sure if I like it
From the town's point of view? Was that because...
So let, so let, so since you, and I remember discussing this, and I remember when I first saw the 10 steps, I said, oh, come on, how can we have 10 steps? And maybe you took me too literally.
No, actually, this is, this, this part of it is really all from, from John, I think, and it comes from his, his experiences doing inspections for other municipalities. And I know that there are some things that he feels very strongly about, such as they shouldn't be scheduled. And I think it should be discussed with him.
And let's wait until John is here, because, I mean, am I right? I mean, we've gone from, I mean, it really is a dramatic shift.
I think that he was trying to condense things, and I think that a lot of those things are specific to the project. Are they? Or not really?
I, no. It doesn't say that. I mean, I mean, we go from something which is, I mean, you know, very much like a menu. You do this, and then you do that, and then you do this, and then you do that, and one thing follows another, and then we go from that to, well, you know, we could use a pinch of salt, and we could use some pepper, you know, and that might work. I mean, I don't, I'm being overly dramatic.
You know, I think his, his concern is that the way it was laid out before is kind of a linear process and that construction really isn't, it doesn't work that way.
I think that I see both points. I think that the concern is though, is we wanna make sure we have teeth in order to do all these things. And if it's that cut out, we're not going to be able to do that.
So, let's hold on that discussion until John is here. And, so that was really my major, my major question. I did have a number of others, but since I don't have my glasses, I can't read my writing.
Yeah.
One of the questions that I had, Martha, is when it comes to a determination of an adequacy of way.
Oh, perfect.
Have we come up with a list yet in the assessors, at the town clerk's office of public roads and things like that?
They're still working on that. They've been going through old town meeting minutes to try to actually see, you know, what's, what's officially been accepted.
Is it like something that they're working on or just if it's requested?
Um, no, they've been working, actively working on it. They got up to a certain point and they need to find somebody else who can continue that.
Because that's one of the issues that comes up multiple times, is that we don't even have one of those. And I don't know, is that something that we should be requesting of them to kinda make sure they know it's a priority, or do they?
They know. They know. It comes up all the time, but it's really a matter of having a person, one of our senior work-off people was doing it, and she's, you know, her time is up, so she's elsewhere, so we need to find somebody else.
Come in and do it, okay.
Because it's time consuming to go back through all the town meeting minutes from...
I mean, we're talking, you can go way back.
The beginning of time.
Right.
In, in one case, we talk about trees with 12-inch diameters, and then in another case in the back, we say six inches.
Yeah, there is a conflict.
So we have a conflict on that.
And that, that was another thing going through there. We talk about that if we're gonna clear a site, so say we're gonna put in, I don't know, a subdivision of 20 homes. We in the past have actually required the developer to go through and tag all the trees that are greater than six diameter. And they've done that? I've seen it for smaller ones, but I didn't know we've done it for bigger ones. So that's common. That's not like crazy. That sounds crazy to me.
Well, I think that specifically for ones that are gonna be in the, in the right-of-way, I think.
The right-of-way of the road?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I read it that way, the right-of-way. So they lay out the road and they look at the right-of-way and just for, it's more of like, you know, street appeal going down? You know, what made me think of it too was when the, Mark DePiero, um, subdivision over for the Harbor Schools with that big beech tree.
Mm-hmm.
At Roth, Rothling?
Yeah, so if that wasn't in the right-of-way, then that wouldn't have been an issue.
Well, I think that one in particular, everybody was in agreement, should be saved.
Should be saved.
He, he worked around it.
No, he was, but I'm just saying, like, do we have anything, I guess I'm kinda going from one direction to the other. I see if you're going down and you're looking at the right-of-way, the streets gape, wanna protect the larger trees. Now, if you have a large site and you have a beautiful beech tree like that, that's so many years old, do, do we do anything? I know in the OSRD, we have the ability to kind of like, and we don't wanna touch the tree, but right now, do we?
I would say so.
We do? Under what?
What's your question? We have the right to do what?
I just went from one extreme to another. So, if you have a large subdivision, say, like, you're gonna put in 20 houses, you know, we make the contractor go out there and look at all the diameter trees over than six inches. And I first, when I read it, I first thought it was the whole site, but then I remember saying the right-of-way, so I get that. But if you're only looking at the right-of-way, what if you have a tree that's like a beautiful beech tree like that one, that isn't in the right-of-way? Do we have any control over under regular subdivision? I don't think...
Well, an environmental analysis is required. And one of the items there is vegetative cover, blah, 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 including major tree groupings and other outstanding trees or botanical features. So those, those are all things that can be taken into consideration.
But each house, each dwelling unit displaces trees also.
Right, right.
And so you just can't look at the right-of-way. You also have to take into account the area of dwelling unit which is gonna displace, displace trees.
Right, and the environmental analysis, I think, covers all of it.
Um, I have a couple of small things here. You would, you would raise the issue of whether or not steel pipes or they should be iron, and I always thought they were iron.
I thought they were iron too. That was not a change that...
Yeah, I never, I've never heard of steel pipes being used. Do you know, do you know?
Well?
You put steel pipes in for monuments, this is the, monuments shall be installed at all street intersections at all points and change. Covers the street. Steel pipes shall be installed at the front corners.
Remember we had, you mean the post for the lot lines? Is that what the steel monuments are?
Yeah, I think so. Steel pipes shall be installed, 31, shall be installed at the front two corners of the individual lots within the subdivision and other points where, in the opinion of the board, per, permanent monuments are necessary. I don't know. I guess, maybe it is steel. Maybe it is steel.
We, I have...
It's usually iron, iron rods.
I have wrought iron.
Wrought iron, wrought iron, yeah, something like that. I think it's iron. Anyway, the other, only other nitpicking point I have is that on page 25, item B, and I'm just curious why we came up with the distance from this point to the sideline of the through street shall be no more than 307 feet. So...
The, the idea there, and I think it was, I think it was John's calculation, basically to allow two full lots in there, so that would be 250, and then adding in the width of the right-of-way, if it's taking it to the center line.
Oh, okay, 150, 150 plus what?
Well, that, that's another question. Right now, um...
Anyway. You don't need to...
Yeah, it makes sense.
You don't need to defend it, as long as he can defend it. The only other, other area. Granite. Oh, the rather detailed requirements for the digital submissions. And I was wondering whether they, in some way, it seemed they were more definitive than the requirements for the my law submissions. And so, I mean, they're very extensive, and I thought that they were more so than the others. So if you would just kind of take a look at that, and maybe I'm...
Well, that came directly from MVPC, because it goes, it goes to them and, and...
But I'm, would you just make sure that it's not contradicting what we require in terms of a hard copy? And that's it.
What he took off, that, Martha, I wasn't sure if you or John did the monuments we were just talking about. But basically what it is, is it's out of our old subdivision, and he just changed, or you just changed some of the wording. And that was iron pipes before, and now it's steel pipes in that particular one.
And unless he is, you know, conversant and all of a sudden everybody's using steel and that's, you know, common usage or something like that.
Is that for the point marks, marks?
The lot lines, lot boundaries. I like the, I like the granite ones. I had, I dug up, I put all the granite ones.
As a permanent marker, but as far as marking them out generally, you can use an iron pen?
Well, they usually just put them in the corners. Usually have four corners.
Anything else? Because we're gonna revisit this next time.
I will ask some, some questions of the board though. The section that was added regarding essentially construction administration to try to give the board more teeth while things are...
I liked that.
Do you all feel that that was a good idea, or...
Yep, I did.
I think you did a good job.
Yeah. I mean, we're being picky here, but I mean, this is a very difficult document, and I really applaud the work that you and John did. Not easy.
I'm amazed, because it's not very exciting either to sit there and go through it over and over and stretch it out over two years. It's, it's difficult to go back where visions came and stuff like that.
I had notes in my files that were really a year old. And I was happy to see that some of my recommendations in fact were used. Anyway.
Aren't you excited to get rid of it?
So...
It'll be good to get it done.
Do you have any other questions? Because otherwise we can wrap things up.
No, I think this is, this, I have one other, and it's really, it's something I've reviewed with, with John, and I, I think it might be worth reviewing a little bit more, is... is...
Just make sure you take it home.
The cross-section and the width of the right-of-way, which has expanded from what we had before.
Yeah, I would like to see this, but I wanna do it with John, and I have my own glasses, and we can spend the time looking at it, yeah, I'd like to take a look at that.
Is it to increase it or decrease it?
It increases it, and one of the concerns that I have, and I'm not sure how we would deal with it, it kinda goes back to something I was saying before, we have a lot of lots that were, that have that 50-foot frontage, that met the requirement for a right-of-way, that could be developed as a subdivision, once we go to 56 or 58 feet.
Oh, you mean if they tore down a house and put the road through?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, I'm not quite sure how to reconcile that.
So this is because he was trying to, I forget, he was trying to...
He's trying to get country drainage on both sides, and I think it's allowed for country drainage sidewalks on both sides, which we don't necessarily require.